To sit and put their notes in their Bible out. And we know you at home are all sprout out with your, most of you got your pajamas on. Uh, and we're a little jealous here, but we're here tonight. And so, uh, we do have a few missing, uh, that are sick. And so, some of you are watching from home that normally come. And so, um, we have a lot sick tonight. So, but we have a lot here and so we're, we are so thankful to be here. And, uh, let me just give a shout out to, um, Sherri Isaacs. Yes. That woman has worked on her, uh, on this room, on the room for the men. And she's doing both of, uh, the live feed and then she's doing for believers. And so, thank you so much Sherri for all that you do. My goodness. And Kim has always has the food out for us and ready to go. That's Kim Bagwell in case y'all don't, she's waving. So, but listen, it takes a whole lot to do a Bible study when you're, you know, putting it out there. And so, we're so glad that you're watching and so welcome. And I hope that you all enjoyed last week and I hope that you were able to go back and, um, take your notes and put them in your Bible or even just look at that piece of paper and kind of go back over that and learn a little bit for those of you who are new to inductive study. Um, I do want to say this. Um, if you do not have a business card of hours from Lyft, please see me and let me give you one. And here's the reason why. We're going to start after this Bible study. We're going to do the inductive study. Yes, that's it. Um, and Vicky's going to start posting that and we'll talk more about it. But I just wanted to touch on it just a little bit. Um, and so if you're not a part of the Lyft group, which you don't have to be to be in here, uh, and to be a part of the Bible study. If you're wanting to take this study, Lord, teach me to study the Bible in 28 days. We're going to start posting those videos. It's five weeks. You have to buy the workbook and we're going to talk about that probably next week a little bit more. So if you do not have Facebook, if you do not want to be in the Lyft group, that's okay. Everything is on YouTube. Also, Vicky said that, um, if you would get us your email address, she would personally email you the links to the YouTube. So you didn't have to go through it and hunt for it. She will email you those studies directly. So again, we'll talk more about that later. But, um, it is an opportunity for you to go back and have a refresher course. Um, it's great if you've never ever done it before. You're going to learn a whole lot. And, uh, the teachings are recorded, they're pre-recorded and we just wanted to always offer that. So that anytime we have newcomers, they can learn how to study the Bible inductively. Just takes a little workbook and I'm, I'm guiding you all the way through it. So, um, if you, if you're not a part of Lyft and you want to do that, you can find us on YouTube. And again, she will email those links to you directly. So, let's pray and we're going to get started on chapter 21, 20, no, 20. Whew, thank you. 20, 21, and 22 tonight. Then next week will be 23, 24, and 25. I had no idea when we started this, if we would even get through the book of Matthew. I didn't know how we were going to divvy it up. I didn't know if we would make it through. But here we are and we're going to be able to do it by the Lord's help. And that's just how he leads and guides. And so, it always works out. So, for that, I'm thankful. Let's pray and we'll turn to chapter 20 and get started. Father, thank you so much for this day. And, um, only you know what kind of day each of us have had. And so, God, I'm just thankful for this time to where we can come and, um, dwell in your presence together and that we can rest in your word. And I just thank you, Lord, for everyone that is watching tonight, that's here, and those that watch tomorrow or next week. God, I just prayed that, um, you would meet their needs. And that you would minister to them, those that are sick, God, you know, the need. And so, we trust you for their healing. And we just ask, God, that you would hug us in a sweet and very special way tonight. And, uh, just guard my heart and my mouth and give me clarity, Lord. Um, and help me to say only that which would be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen. So, in chapter 20, in this chapter, verses 1 through 16 explains to us what Matthew 19:30 is referring to. The kingdom of heaven being like a landowner. And I see us as believers, as laborers in his vineyard. That's what we're to be in reference to the landowner hiring labors, laborers. They agree on a day's wages for their work. And then later on in the day, other laborers were hired. And when time for payment for their work, they all got the same amount in wages. Now, I would probably be upset about that, anybody else. I would be a little upset. And, um, of course, the laborers who worked in the scorching heat of the day, they were upset when the landowner explained, "Is it not lawful for me to do what I wish with what is my own?" And so, when I saw that, let me just go on and I'll come back to that. Or, "Is your eye envious because I am generous?" This is the landowner. And this parable ends with, "So the last shall be first and the first last." And then I hope that you were able to mark all your time phrases with your pen. Um, and in the NASB, in this NISB that we have, it actually tells us the time of day that it was about three o'clock. But when I read that part that the landowner asked the question, "Is it not lawful for me to do what I wish with what is my own?" It made me think of, have you ever gone to the Lord and questioned him? Not out of disrespect, not being mean and ugly, but simply, I do not understand. I, I don't know why, and he doesn't have to tell me why, but he is my father. I'm his daughter and I can come to him because he already knows what I'm thinking anyway. But it kind of made me think about that. Um, when I come to him and I express my concerns, um, as to why this or that? And the question, you know, is it not lawful for me to do what, what I wish? That's mine. So that kind of puts things in perspective in that you can ask, but let's just deal with what concerns you instead of you trying to figure out why did this or didn't do this for everybody else. So that was just a little thought there. Now, listen carefully what Jesus told his disciples. Look at verses 18 and 19. We're going to read those. Behold, we are going up to Jerusalem and the son of man will be delivered. In my Bible, if you have a one beside that, if you have the same Bible that I do, you'll see a one there. If you look over there into your, uh, where you have your cross references, you will see that another word for that meaning is betrayed. Behold, we are going to up to Jerusalem and the son of man will be delivered to the chief priest or he'll be betrayed. And they will condemn him to death and will hand him over to the Gentiles to mock and scourge and crucify him. And on the third day, he will be raised up. Now, that's pretty heavy conversation, if you ask me. But here's what, did you, did you notice this? The mother now, in the next verse, after Jesus just said what he did, the mother in the next verse had something else on her mind. That one, uh, that, that whole verse left me kind of scratching my head a little bit. But we go from Jesus telling them that he's going to die and he's going to rise again. And while mom's over here coming to Jesus with her two boys bowing down and making a request of him. It was almost like she didn't even hear what he just said. And then he asks what she wishes for. And she said, "Command that in your kingdom, these two sons of mine may sit one on your right and one on your left." And I'm like, what? Like, how would you have been, had you been in that conversation, when he says, "I'm going to die and I'm going to rise again." I, I don't even know, I can't even explain that way of thinking there. It, it was almost like she didn't even hear what he had just said. But Jesus explains that the position is not his to give. And that's for those for whom it has been prepared by his father, he said. And then reading on, we know the other disciples became indignant with the two brothers. Jesus called them to himself and explains that whoever wishes to be great among you shall be your servant. And whoever wishes to be first among you shall be your slave. Wow. So, um, let me make sure I didn't turn too many pages here. And I did. So, in verse 28, "Just as the son of man did not come to be served..." But to do what? Serve, yes. "...and to give his life a ransom for many." And that many includes every one of us for which I'm so thankful that he did that. CM Craig said, and I love this, you might want to write this little quote down. "The posture of biblical leadership is servanthood." I'm going to repeat that. "The posture of biblical leadership is servanthood." And I don't know how it looks for us to, to lead without serving. You might want to give that some thought. And is it a servant's heart that I have or that you have or that we pray for? Now, I can, I'm not saying this just because Sherri is here and just because she does everything that we need and, and she and Richard go above and beyond. But I will say from the depths of my soul, I have never seen people serve like that right there. You all are such a great example, Sherri, of what it means to be a servant. And that's a great example for us to follow. And, um, I, I mean, I've sat back and just watched and I've thought, "Lord, give me that servant's heart." Oh, sorry. Give me that servant's heart, uh, like they have. What a great example that they are. And you don't find that everywhere. And so, I'm so thankful for that and what a great example. And, uh, you're just following the example of Jesus and, and I'm so thankful for that. Uh, and that light shines greatly and so we appreciate that. But in conclusion, we have yet another crowd following him. Two blind men sitting by the road hearing that Jesus was passing by. "When they cried out, 'Lord, have mercy on us.'" The crowd telling the two blind men to be quiet. They cried out all the more, as would I. But I love the tenderness in verse 32. "Jesus stopped and called them and said, 'What do you want me to do for you?'" Now, do you remember the conversation that he just had? "I'm going to die, I'm going to rise." But two people in need called out to Jesus and he stopped. And that's his example, uh, for us to know that we can reach out and call on him. And he said, "What do you want me to do for you?" Let's look at verses 33 and 34. And it says, "They said to him, 'Lord, we want our eyes to be opened.'" And by that, I put, "Lord, open my eyes." I don't want to be blind by things that are going on around me. I want to see that which he wants to show me. And I couldn't help but think of that passage of scripture in Psalm 119, verse 18. If you want to turn with me there really quick. Psalm 119, it's the center of your Bible. And it's verse 18. It's a verse that most of you can quote by heart. Psalm 119, verse 18, that says, and I've prayed this many times and I'm sure that you have too. "When the psalmist said, 'Open my eyes that I may behold wonderful things from your law.'" And beside that, I put, "Please, Lord." Please, Lord, let me see what you want me to see. "Open my eyes that I may behold wonderful things from your law." But they said unto him, "Lord, we want our eyes to be opened." And listen to this, "moved with compassion." Jesus touched their eyes and when, when does it say? Immediately. There's your time phrase right there. Immediately, they regained their sight. And what did they do? They followed him. I love that Jesus was moved with compassion. He touched their eyes and immediately they regained their sight and they followed him. I mean, Jesus stopped, he called, and then he touched. Jesus is one of such compassion. And I'm so thankful and I'm humbled by the fact that when we have nothing but maybe complaints and grumbling, we can still fall on our knees. And we can pour our hearts out to him because he loves us so good, so much. And he's so compassionate and I love that. And he understands where we are and who we are and where we're coming from. But my theme for this chapter is this. "The son of man came to serve and give his life." And that's found in verse 28. I love that. The application is do not be envious. And sometimes y'all, I don't know if you all have a problem with that, but I'm just going to tell you, sometimes I struggle with that. I just do. And I, that's not anything I'm proud of, but I'm human and I just do. And, um, and I have my meltdowns about that, like I did today in my closet. I'm just going to keep it real, you know? I just had a meltdown in my closet and I'm, and you know, and I pray about that. And here's the thing, if I can get that off my chest and I can confess that and I can ask for forgiveness and I can ask for help in that area, the areas that I struggle in, that's, who better to go to than one who is filled with compassion? And who's going to hear me and he's going to see me? And I know that he loves that vulnerability and that honesty. Coming to him and saying, "Lord, I'm, I'm a messed up mess." And you know, that's just what I have felt like, you know? And so, um, do not be envious. And then the second thing that really stood out to me was serve him by serving others. And be that an example, be that example that we see in Sherri and Richard. And, um, try to, you know, try to be careful in serving and not be one to be served. And then the last thing that stood out to me was rest in the compassion of Jesus. And he, y'all, we're sitting here, that tells us how compassionate he is and how merciful and how gracious that he is to us for which I'm so thankful. If you look in chapter 21, uh, you know, I paraphrase a lot and there are a few verses that we do look at, but, and, and that's for the sake of time. "But when they approached Jerusalem, Jesus sent two of his disciples into a village, where they would find a donkey and a colt there. And the disciples went and they did just as Jesus had instructed," which is a great example to us. "And they brought back the donkey and the colt, and they fulfilled what was spoken through the prophet. And the disciples laid their jackets upon the colt, and then Jesus sat on their coats." I love that. So let's read verses 8 through 11 in chapter 21. "Most of the crowds spread their coats in the road, and others were cutting branches from the trees and spreading them in the road. The crowds going ahead of him and those who followed were shouting, 'Hosanna to the son of David! Blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord, Hosanna in the highest.' When he had entered Jerusalem, all the city was stirred, saying, 'Who is this?' Verse 11. "And the crowds were saying, 'This is the prophet Jesus from Nazareth and Galilee.'" I don't know if you looked up what the definition of the word Hosanna means, but there were two definitions that I found. One of which says, means, "Oh, save!" Exclamation point. The other one, an ex, an exclamation of adoration. Think about this. They were, um, you know, giving adoration to him. Here he is riding through town and they're saying, "Hosanna, the one who saves." And exclaiming, uh, the exclamation of adoration. I just love that. And verses 12 through 13, entering the temple, Jesus drove out those who were buying and selling in the temple. He overturned the tables of the money changers and said, "My house shall be called a house of what?" Prayer, yes. "But you..." But, there's a contrast. "You're making it a robber's den." And he's quoting Isaiah 56, verse 7 right there. You'll probably see that in your cross reference in your Bible. So verses 14 through 16, "The blind and the lame came to Jesus in the temple where he healed them. But when the chief priests and scribes saw the wonderful things that he had done, and hearing the children shouting, 'Hosanna to the son of David,' they became indignant. They were sorely displeased. These indignant priests and scribes said to Jesus, 'Do you hear what these children are saying?' And then Jesus quotes Psalm 8:2, when he answers them, "Yes." Have you never read, "Out of the mouth of infants and nursing babies, you have prepared praise for yourself?" And you can see Matthew 11:25 is a cross reference. And it goes to show that the brilliant aren't always the wisest. And I love how the New Living Translation reads 1 Corinthians 1:27 that says, "Instead, God chose things the world considers foolish in order to shame those who think they are wise. And he chose things that are powerless to shame those who are powerful." I love that. You, you can be a scholar, but you can be just about stupid in some ways. You know, you know, people who have book sense, but they don't have any common sense, you know? I do not have book sense, I'm just telling you. Um, "But he used those children." And the scribes are questioning, and you know, they're known to be so brilliant. And I love that example there. So in verse 17 through 19, Jesus left and he went to the city of Bethany. And he stayed the night and the next morning, he's returning to the city, as you read, and he became hungry. "And he came to a fig tree and found nothing on it except leaves." And we see this did not make him a happy traveler. Jesus said to the tree, "No longer shall, shall there ever be any fruit from you." The fig tree withered. This non-bearing fig tree withered. It was absolutely useless. And I couldn't help but think about us as Christians. Are we fruit bearers? Is our testimony withered? Does God use, is he able to use that? Do we allow him to use where we've been and where he's brought us from? Or are we, or are we all withered up? Is our relationship with him somewhat dry? Are we producing by sharing him from a place of gratitude? Or have we somehow become complacent and satisfied without sharing him? Have you ever thought about your relationship with the Lord? And you just felt kind of dead and dried up and not close? And we know that he hasn't left us. But we've kind of, um, we haven't lost our salvation. We have just kind of taken a different route and left him by the wayside. And we're not as close to him because we haven't longed for him like we've longed for everything else. Are we like the children that we read about in verse 15 and 16, who were shouting, "Hosanna"? Or are we sitting in the temple, buying and selling, working for money, so focused on where we're going to travel and what we're going to purchase next? And our focus completely off track, just withered up spiritually speaking? And you know that, you can sense that and you can feel that. And so, when you do, it's okay to confess that. And it's okay to bring it to him and, and share those thoughts with him. So that you can be reignited by him and his, and his presence. So in verse 20 through 22, we have the disciples amazed and asking how the fig tree withered all at once, to which Jesus replied, "If you have faith and do not doubt, you will not only do what was done to the fig tree, but even if you say to this mountain, 'Be taken up and cast into the sea,' it will happen." And then in verse 22, it says, "In all things you ask in prayer." How does it say to ask in prayer? What was, what's the next word? How? Believing, yes, you will receive. And then in my Bible, on June the 14th, 2017, I wrote a note in my Bible beside that verse regarding the salvation for my family. And that we would be used for God's glory. And you can also, uh, look in Mark 11:24 there and put that down in your Bible if you want to use that as a cross reference as well. In verses 23 through 27, we have the chief priest and the elders asking Jesus questions, who then turns around and asks them questions. And of course, no answers were given. If you look in verses 33 through 39, we have another parable about a landowner who planted a vineyard, who sent his slaves when the harvest time came to receive his produce. "The vine growers took the slaves, beat one, killed one, and stoned one. And they did that twice. When the landowner sent his own son, thinking that the vine growers would respect his son, what'd they do? They killed him as well." Now, let's read verses 40 through 46. "Therefore, when the owner of the vineyard comes, what will he do to these, to those vine growers? They said to him, 'He will bring those wretches to a wretched end and will rent out the vineyard to other vine growers, who will pay him the proceeds at the proper seasons.'" Jesus said to them, "Did you never read in the scripture, 'The stone which the builders rejected? This became the chief cornerstone. This came about from the Lord, and it is marvelous in our eyes.'" "Therefore, I say to you, 'The kingdom of God will be taken away from you and given to a people or a nation, producing the fruit of it.'" Verse 44. "And he who falls on this stone will be broken to pieces, but on whomever it falls, it will scatter him like dust." Verse 45. "When the chief priests and the Pharisees heard parables," his parables, "they understood that he, Jesus, was speaking about them. When they sought to seize him, they feared the people because they considered him to be a prophet." My theme for this chapter is ask in prayer believing. And the reason, uh, well, it tells us how to pray believing. And that is the, um, that's what I wanted to see when I looked over at my chapter things. I wanted to remember that this chapter was about asking in prayer and believing, which is verse 22. The application that I took away from this is take a look inward. And is my life, is your life shouting, "Hosanna"? Does our lifestyle exclaim that of adoration for who he is? For what he came to do, for what he did? The second thing was have faith and do not doubt. And you know what? I don't think that if you were doing any Bible study and you were looking at the application, I think you could probably put that at the end of every chapter in the Bible. Have faith because he is faithful. So have faith, do not doubt in verse 21. And then in verse 22, ask in prayer. And then in verse 22, ask in prayer, believing you will receive. And then the last thing, "The kingdom of God will be given to a people producing the fruit of it." So we need to be intentional about producing fruit. And I fear that that is not always on my mind. That's not always the first and foremost thought. And I hate to say that, but I'm just keeping it real. But are we being intentional? And we can come to church, but some churches are about everything but that. You know that, y'all have been there. How are we doing there? Now, let's look at verse, excuse me, chapter 22. You read the parable in verses 1 through 15 about the king who gave a wedding feast for his son. And I couldn't help but think that God, through his servants, invite all to come to the wedding feast. However, in this parable, no one came or paid attention. They went their own way, kind of like now. A lot of people today. And the servants of God were mistreated, and they were killed. And God destroyed the murderers. Then he sent out more servants to the streets and gathered all they found, good and evil. And the wedding hall was filled with guests. And then in verse 11, he finds a dinner guest who was not dressed in wedding clothes. And I personally saw this as one who was not changed. And he had this individual thrown out into the darkness, like you read. Of course, through this parable, the Pharisees plotted how they might trap Jesus in what he said. Do y'all remember when we first started this book of Matthew? And I said, "From the very get-go, from the time that he was born, somebody was out to get him." And here, once again, we're in chapter 22. And they're still plotting. They wanted to trap him somehow, some way. The Redeemer, the Savior of the world. They didn't even know who was standing in front of him. Some of them did. But then, let's read verse 16, because this is for me, a standalone verse. Matthew 22, verse 16. "And they," talking about the Pharisees here, "sent their disciples to Jesus, along with the Herodians, saying, 'Teacher, we know that you are truthful, and teach the way of God in truth, and defer to no one, for you are not partial to any.'" Now, I love that. Let's look at a cross-reference in Acts. Chapter 10. Verse 34. Acts 10:34. Opening his mouth, Peter said, "I most certainly understand now that God is not one to show partiality." I love that. And there are days that I need that, especially on a day when I'm being envious. You know what I'm saying? Now, look at Romans 2:11. Romans 2:11. I love this verse, it is so simple. It says, "For there is no partiality with God." I know that you all are familiar with those two verses, but the reason that I wanted to show you these in your Bible and remind you of them again is when the enemy comes to you, like he does me, and says to you, "You're not as loved. You're not as special as they are." You can answer him with the word. Acts 10:34. Romans 2:11. There is no partiality with God. And when you come back with word, he knows. The enemy knows. There is no partiality. It may look like it. We don't know what that person's gone through to get where they're going or to get what they got. That's great grammar, isn't it? That's just simple, that's just amen. But you can answer the enemy with saying, "Oh, no, you may say that, but let me just tell you what he says. There is no partiality with my God." And I'm so thankful for that, those two verses. So in verses 17 through 22, Jesus is still being questioned and he perceived their wickedness, their malice, and calling them hypocrites and asking them, "Why are you testing me?" He advises to render to Caesar the things that are Caesar's and God the things that are God's, in verse 21. And then in verses 23 through 28, in walks the Sadducees, asking about a husband and wife having no children, but the man having seven brothers to marry the wife, who then dies. And asking about the resurrection, who the Sadducees actually say, "There is no resurrection." Now, let's read verses 29 through 33. "But Jesus answered and said to them, 'You are mistaken, not understanding the scriptures nor the power of God. For in the resurrection they neither marry nor are given in marriage, but are like angels in heaven.' But regarding the resurrection of the dead, have you not read what was spoken to you by God? I am the God of Abraham, and the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob. He is not the God of the dead, but of the living. When the crowds heard this, they were astonished at his teaching." So Jesus just silenced the Sadducees there. So in walks the Pharisees again. One being a lawyer, and he begins to question Jesus about the great commandment in the law, to which Jesus replies, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, and with all your soul, and with all your mind." And he's quoting Deuteronomy 6:5. Jesus goes on to tell the lawyer what the second one says. "You shall love your neighbor as yourself." And he's quoting Leviticus 19:18. And he goes on to say in verse 40, "On these two commandments depend the whole law and prophets." How many of us have heard those two most of our lives? If you grew up in church at all, you've heard those. How are we doing? Y'all don't have to answer that out loud. You know what I'm saying? Because not everybody's easy to love. And so, how are we doing with loving God with all of our heart? This morning, early, I was in the shower, and I had reviewed these two statements. "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart." And I thought about, when you love somebody, you want to be with them. You want to spend time with them. And it's so easy for us to say, "Oh, I love you, Lord, I love you, Lord." But what about? How much time are we spending with them? Because the more time that we spend with them, the more we look like him. The more we talk like him, the more we act like him, the more fruit we bear. So those you're spending all your time with, reprioritize and reconsider how much time do we give him in a day? I can confess to you that I spend way too much time on my phone. Not nearly equal amount of time in his word. Now, do I talk to him all throughout the day? Yeah, because I gotta have him. I know y'all do too. I mean, like, Lord, help me, because I'm about to say something, you know? Or I'm wanting to say something. Or, you know? Because that's just the human side of us, you know? And he understands that, and he loves us still. But when you love somebody, you want to spend time with them. And it says, "Love the Lord with all your heart, and all your soul, and all your mind." And I think if we were all honest, we could say that there's room to grow in this area and in this verse. But you know what we can do about it? We can pray that. We can pray to God, his word, "Lord, you said, love you with all of our heart." I don't. I want to, and it's easy for me to say that I do, but my actions say that I don't. So God, you know my weaknesses. And your strength is made perfect in those weaknesses according to your word. So God, just help us to love you with all of our hearts. Because when we do that, automatically, we're going to have that servant's heart. Which is what we want. "And you shall love your neighbor as yourself." It's not just talking about the neighbor on straight, y'all. It's talking about the neighbors in your realm of your influence. Wherever you work, wherever you are, whoever God puts in your path, that's our neighbor. And we're to love them as we love ourselves. Now, let's read verses 41 through 46. "Now while the Pharisees were gathered together, Jesus asked them a question. What do you think about the Christ? Whose son is he? They said to him, 'The son of David.' He said to them, 'Then how does David in the Spirit call him Lord, saying, "The Lord said to my Lord, 'Sit at my right hand until I put your enemies beneath your feet.' If David then calls him Lord, how is he his son? No one was able to answer him a word, nor did anyone dare, from that day on, to ask him another question." I mean, he shut the Pharisees down. No more questions. So my theme for chapter 22, Jesus, the Teacher of Truth. Teaches the way of God not partial to any. I'm so thankful. I don't have to be rich. I don't have to be educated. I don't have to have a title. He loves me just the same as he does everybody. Because he doesn't show partiality. And I just love that he loves us that way. Jesus, the Teacher of Truth, teaches the way of God not partial to any. And that's in verse 16. So the application, invite others to know Jesus. And wouldn't it be wonderful to be said of us individually that, "Man, he knows the Lord. You can tell she spends some time with the Lord." And that's very inviting, that's very contagious. Because I mean, I've been around some folks that I'm like, "Whew, I need to spend some more time with Jesus so I can radiate like that," you know? And I don't know if that will ever be, but God knows that's my heart. I mean, I can think of, and somebody have to help me with the time, I don't want to... Are we good? I know this is a little different. Are we good? Okay. There's a woman, and y'all have heard me talk about her in other Bible studies. And I may have mentioned this in our class as well. There is a lady by the name of Esther Burrows. And I have seen her two or three times. Was she not in Birmingham when we went and saw Bethmore the first time at that church in Birmingham? And I've seen her since, but I'm going to tell you something. That woman radiates Jesus. I could sit literally at her feet and hang on every word she says, because you know what? Her demeanor, she's not perfect, she's human, she can't be perfect. He radiates from her. And you can tell that she knows him up close and personal, that she spends time with him. And she is the most gracious, most beautiful woman. And just as humble. And I'll never forget a story that she said, that she's made all of her grandchildren, I don't know, some kind of blanket, I can't remember if it was a quilt, whatever kind it was. But she says, "In the chair that she sits in, and as she sews, hand sews that, the whole time she's doing it, she's praying for that one child. Because it's that blanket that she's going to give." Now, can you imagine? That's a lot of prayer time. And she just glows. And you've heard that phrase, "The glow of God." I love that. And she is just one of the people that I, when I look at her, I think, wow. You know? To be able to know him in such a way. So, and that's a way of inviting others to know Jesus, which was my application, the first application. The second one is always speak truth. The third is the one that we stopped and paused on, the one that we're all familiar with. "Love the Lord your God with all your heart, and all your soul, and with all your mind." And then, of course, the last one is, "Love your neighbor as yourself." So that's all I have for those three chapters. What I would like to suggest to you is, when you study chapter 23, you don't have to mark another thing, but I would love for you to mark the word Pharisee in chapter 23. Even when it says, it doesn't say Pharisee, but it says them or there, you know who they're talking about, and you would mark it in the same way. And you'll be surprised, if you haven't already worked ahead, how many times you're going to see that. So get your color pencil, whatever. I always color the Pharisees orange. And so I would just like for you to mark that one thing in chapter 23. And so we know, and I hope you know by now, that the Pharisees, can somebody tell me what that means? We've gone over it several times, we've written it. They're separatists. There's nothing about them that's unified. They're separatists, they always want to cause that division. And then they're the ones that are exclusively religious. But their religion doesn't radiate a relationship at all. And we don't want that to be said of us, that we're good, fine, religious folks. We want them to say about us, "Man, she has a relationship with the Lord." And we want what we have with him to be contagious. And so, I hope you all have enjoyed this. I can't believe we only have two weeks left. And so, if I can remember, I will bring the book that you'll need to order for those of you who are going to do the five-week study while we're on our break. The Lord Taught Me to Study the Bible in 28 Days. I believe that there is free shipping if you order that book on CBD.com. If I'm not mistaken, I think Vicky had posted that on our page, the link, and you just click on the link and go and make that purchase. So be sure and look at that. And I'm so excited for Sandy. She just got her Bible, her new Bible, her new NISB Bible, was it today? Yes. And so, I'm always excited about that, because I'm just very, very partial to that. So I'm excited for you once you get in there and dive in. And so... But thank you all for being here. Let's pray for those that are sick. And let's pray for our services this Sunday. Wherever you go to church, pray for your pastor. Pray for your praise team. It's more than just coming together and being seen. And you know what? We have a very small congregation here. But it is so sweet. And the presence of the Lord was so obvious Sunday. And just what a blessing and an honor. It doesn't matter the size of the church, it matters about our hearts and who were there to worship and serve. And that's evident when you go to church. And I'm so thankful that his presence was just, he just made himself known. And I'm excited about this Sunday. And we're having the Believers Church and the Bethel Church congregation coming together, having Thanksgiving meal together. So if you come and you surprise us, bring something to eat, we'll eat it. We love to eat around here. And so, but thank you all for being so attentive, and let's pray, and then we'll dismiss. Father, thank you so much for this opportunity. You're so good to us, and your word is so sweet. And when we are being envious, and we're wondering why them, not us, and all of the things that we think, and you know them, you know everything that we think about. But I'm so thankful, God, that your word is truth, and it... But I'm so thankful, God, that your word is truth and it, it teaches us. And I'm so thankful, God, that you don't have favorites, that we're, we're your children and that you love us all. And so we're so thankful that we can come and we can pour our hearts out to you. And you know, and you care, and what compassion that you show to us all. We love you so much. And God, I just pray that you will just, um, invade our services this weekend with your presence. May you be glorified and honored in every song that's sung and every word that is spoken. And God, I pray for Richard right now. I just pray, Lord, that you will pour up on him your spirit. And that you would just hover over him and teach him so he can teach us Sunday. Thank you, Lord, for their servants' hearts. God, I ask that you would give me one. And that you would help us all to love you with every fiber of our being. In Jesus' name. Amen.